Welcome back, everybody. Thank you so much for your patience with regard to our audio issues. Let's go ahead and just start. This is actually the third time we've done this. When we started off, when I started off being mayor six years ago, which I can't believe it's been six years, we started off with doing neighborhood connections. And those were out in the community. We really wanted to take City Hall out into the community. About a year ago, we started doing these Facebook Live events to make sure that we reached out to you, and that's what we're doing. Now, if the audio worked a few minutes ago, you would have heard me say this introduction. And for those of you who can read lips, good on you. All right. So there are some really good things happening at the City Federal Way and some great questions here. I can see that we've got quite a number of questions. I wanted to let you know that one of the things that, you know, we've are obviously a city now of 30 years. This is our 30-year anniversary as a city this year. And our first-ever overnight emergency shelter was opened up earlier this week on Monday and Tuesday for severe weather. That was over at the Day Center. On Monday, we were staffed by Catholic Community Services, and we had a total of 18 adults and one dog that were able to come in from the cold on Monday evening. The next day, we had another 20 people on Tuesday night. And so that was, you know, very important and a big step for this community moving forward. So I want to say thank you to our Human Services folks, to Catholic Community Services, and everybody at the Day Center that helped make that happen. Yesterday, we were at the Washington State Supreme Court to hear arguments on the sewer and water case that is in litigation now with Lake Haven. And we should have that ruling in three to six months. And several of our partners at Lake Haven were there, and I was there along with a few staff members watching the oral arguments in the State Supreme Court. Really is just a very important process, and we'll talk about that when we get into some of the questions about revenue streams. All right. So we had a lot of questions. Keep the questions coming in. The first question came in from Mandy Wyatt. Her question was, "Crime is not down. Why do you keep saying it is? What are you doing to better this city, truly better it?" Debbie Chapman also asked, "What do you plan to do to reduce crime and murders in this city? Please stop saying crime is down." There was another individual who talked about that as well, just in regard to making sure that we've got a plan and we're holding offenders accountable. So let me say this. You know, I think it's really important to note that we want to give people the best possible information that we can. So what we're talking about really, and then, you know, the way to quantify, you know, where we're at as a city are the crime numbers. Now, I take a look, as I was a career prosecutor for 19 years, 16 with King County, three with the City of Renton. So when we talk about crime is down, it's because the raw numbers are down in regard to key indicator crimes. So between 2000, well, let me just say, overall crime, counting all of the crime, between all of 2019 and all of 2018, we dropped another 11%. Last year, we were, last year in 2019, excuse me, in 2018, we were down 10% from the year before that. In fact, crime is down in our community in four out of the past five years and in the past three consecutive years. Let me give you an indication. In 2019, the raw number of robberies is down by 32%, almost a full third. Aggravated assaults are down by 19%. Residential burglary are down by 33%. Motor vehicle theft is down by 22%. Now, a lot, I, trust me, I hear Yvette and, and I think there was a few other people asking these questions. I hear all the time that people don't feel like crime is going down, but let me, let me explain. The key indicators, robbery, aggravated assault, residential burglary, motor vehicle theft, those are quality-of-life crimes. Those are crimes. When your car is stolen, I think most everybody whose car is stolen reports it to the police. If your home is burglarized, that is certainly something you call the police on. One of the things that I hear as well is that, why are we not, you know, prosecuting people for misdemeanor crimes? And we are. And, you know, our prosecutor, our city prosecutor's offices are very busy. I think two things are going on. Number one, you know, remember, we had that string of robberies along First Avenue from 312th all the way down to 336th. You know, we had, you know, really, one individual that was committing a number of those individual crimes. And that's actually where you get a string of those robberies that really gets people upset, and it gets people very focused on it. Thanks to the great hard work of our police department, we were actually able to identify that suspect. There was a warrant out for that individual right now, and we're getting, you know, we're working through actually pretty great law enforcement techniques. We're able to identify where that person was living and where, where that was coming from. And so that person is not in custody right now. We're actually looking for them, and a warrant is out for their arrest. With regard to the homicides that have occurred in our city, you know, please know that we take those very seriously. You know, the year before, I think we had one homicide, you know, one crime of homicidal violence. That was the year before in 2018. In 2019, we had three homicides, two which occurred fairly late in the year, one of which was the 85-year-old woman who allegedly killed her roommate, and that person is in custody right now. That's a very tragic case. We also, at the beginning of the year, we had a couple of homicides, one of which was a stabbing that occurred at the motel. So, you know, clearly, we are working every day to make sure that the, that we're working on these, on these individual crime numbers. I think what happens is there are a lot of, you know, when we get a spate of robberies or we get some gun violence, either through social media or because we just have become much more aware of it, I think it does feel like there's a lot of crime in the community. But I can tell you that the raw numbers are not increasing, and that should make everybody here feel better, that we are doing everything we can to make your city safe. Now, even though the numbers have been dropping, that doesn't mean we're gonna, that we're satisfied with the level of crime. We want to keep the numbers dropping. In fact, actually, I think I said, in five of the last six years, crime has been dropping. But we want to keep after it because, really, if you really think about it, there's a very small number of people that are committing most of these crimes. And we want to identify those individuals, incarcerate them, and get that number, get our numbers down. Because they're not numbers. They're people that are victimized by these crimes, and I can tell you, there's nothing I take more seriously than your safety. Okay. What's the next one? Okay. Paul Boriskey, "The Federal Way School District claims that poor permitting processes and lack of city cooperation has cost the taxpayers $10 million. What's being to resolve the issue and to stop the finger pointing?" Well, Paul, first thing, I want to hit the main point of this, and the last part of your question is, people do not want finger pointing, and that is not what we want to do. Now, you know, we have worked very, very hard to make sure that we're doing everything we can to work with the school district. And that's what was, what was happening. We went to a few community meetings, and we were hearing from the school district and some other folks that, that we were responsible somehow for this year-long delay in the $10 million. That's just simply not the case. You know, our folks here at the City, at City Hall worked overtime. They work weekends. You know, I chaired meetings with the school district. We absolutely must have the school district succeed. But what we cannot do, and what we will not do, is accept blame for something that we did not necessarily have any, have a role in. We're working very diligently with the school district, but it's not our job to do their job for them. We are not going to fill out their permits form, and I'm sure they would say they don't want us to. But when they, they come to us with incomplete permits or permits that are not acceptable, we cannot accept that. These are safety guidelines. They're international building codes that we have adopted. We absolutely have to follow the letter of the law, and we do. And we have done, you know, I, myself and Director Campbell have sat in meetings, and we've been working very collaboratively. But one of the things that concerned me was somehow or another, this was getting spun up as if this was all the city's fault. And that's not the case. And that's why I think we, I asked our Public Works Director and our Community Development Director to complete a report. That report, I have asked that we add it to this, or people, I would really encourage people to read that executive summary and also the 13-page chronological, or the 10-page chronological report that went through there, and that'll detail that. But people don't want to see us pointing the finger at each other. They want results, and they demand results. At the end, one of the things I said with the school district many, many times was, failure's not an option here. We need to work together. But I'm really proud of the people that work for this city and that work in community development and public works, and they did everything on your behalf and on behalf of all the students and teachers and families in this community. They worked their tails off to get this done. And that's what was disappointing about, you know, this, any kind of claim that this delay was caused by the city's permitting process. It was not, and we did a tremendous amount of work. Now, we're going to continue to work with the school district. They've expressed their concerns. We put out our report and, and made sure that we got that, that we got the record straight. But we certainly are, I think, the people of this community are entitled to the truth, and that's what they got with that, with that three-page executive summary and the 10 pages of notes. Do we have another question? Okay. What are you really going to, what are you going to do about the Warehouser property and the insane increase in truck traffic when warehouses finally get built? I know myself and many neighbors will not be able to get into Federal Way to shop if we can help it. So the city required design engineers to analyze each of the intersections and truck directions and mitigate any reductions in level of service as part of the project. Additionally, by the applicant's design and the conditions of their approval, it would be difficult and expensive for them to use roadways other than the shortest path. So I think the key thing is, is that this permitting process is designed to make sure that the roadways are adjusted and making sure that we don't have levels of service, which is a fancy way of saying it won't take too long or we won't have traffic delays. But that's part of this whole permitting process, to make sure that they account for that increase in traffic. Okay. Dana Holloway writes, "The number-one top priority council goal identified at the February 2018 Council Retreat was to, quote, 'increase sustainable revenue streams to fully fund the city budget and programs.' Please identify all the new sustainable revenue streams in the last two years." Well, I mentioned the water and sewer excise tax that was, is before the State Supreme Court. We won at the trial court level, and then it was appealed to go all the way to the State Supreme Court. They bypassed the Court of Appeals. That would bring in $1 million per year to the City of Federal Way for our, you know, for our operations, and we believe it's very important. We also believe that this was the only utility that was not compliant or taxed under our utility tax, which had been in place for many years. So, you know, the other options, and I saw some questions on this, the other options for sustainable revenue are, oh, I'll get into the future in a moment. Let me talk about this first. In regard to revenue streams, we also brought in additional fees through the permitting process and fees and assessments, and that pays for ongoing staff and ongoing issues to really recompensate the city. So those are really the two principal things. But there's another issue here as well. Many of you remember that we actually pulled out of the SCOR jail, starting on January 1st of this year, and that's going to be a net $2.1 million per year to us. Even after we pay that debt service, even after we have those transport officers, we're going to be experiencing or receiving an additional $2 million a year. Coupled with the $1 million with the water and excise tax that is currently being litigated, we're going to be able to have another $3 million available to us. So that's a big deal. Um, let's see here. Dana wrote again, "What is City doing to stop Sound Transit from selecting Federal Way as the site location for the operations and maintenance facility, otherwise known as OMF?" And she writes that she knows that we have written letters and appeared at the Sound Transit meetings. So I could tell you that, you know, our staff met with Sound Transit yesterday. I met with the Executive Director of Sound Transit two weeks ago, and, you know, we are consistently having our voices heard, you know, through our King County Council member, Pete Von Reichbauer, and also, you know, through the leadership of Sound Transit and through our professional staff as well. So we are really pushing hard for what's referred to as the Midway landfill site, and I can guarantee you that we're doing everything we can to prevent that coming in the City of Federal Way. Tyler, did we get that, that report?
Um, yes.
Okay. So Tyler's posting the report that details the permitting process with the school district. I would encourage you, the executive summary is essentially three pages with a chronological report. And again, it's not about finger pointing, but it is all about making sure that the community knows the truth with regard to public funds and public institutions. Okay. Bill Ellis, "When will the city vastly improve the timing process of timing construction permits?" And he talks about his 33 years of experience and in another state and with the federal government. Bill, you know, I want to let you know that we have really vastly improved our processes at the City of Federal Way and community development, but I would love to sit down with you and have you sit down with our folks, and, and I'd like to hear about your experiences with Warehouser, that city in Wisconsin that you mentioned, and the federal government. And we'll reach out to you via email or send me an email, and we'll get a meeting scheduled, and I'd really like to pick your brain about what your experience here is at the City of Federal Way and, and tell you about some of the things we're doing. There are people here that have been here many years at the City of Federal Way and in our community development department who said that this is the best we've ever been with regard to permitting. And we're, I'm really proud of the people that work in these departments that have worked overtime and worked diligently to ensure that these projects get done on time. Okay. Michael Kilpatrick wrote, "What are you doing about the business impacts in the shopping district with the incoming light rail? And what are your plans to help those small businesses with the loss of revenue and, for the next five years while this building is occurring?" Michael, that's a really great point. Number one, we want to make sure the businesses that are there, the Red Robin, the Azteca, you know, some of the other businesses in that area, we have met personally with many of those businesses, looking to help them. I personally have met with some of those folks, seeing if we can make sure that they relocate in the City of Federal Way, looking for locations for them, and also really thinking about how we can make these transitions as smooth as possible. So, you know, the, the light rail station's going to come into the downtown. It should be a good thing for our city. We're talking about thousands upon thousands of more consumers and people that will be drawn to this city, and in the long run, it'll be good for the city. In the short term, we need to make sure that it's not a death knell for those businesses that are immediately being impacted. So we've got a great Economic Development Director, and I've got a great staff, and we're reaching out personally to doing everything we can to help them find relocation and, and making sure that this actually works for them. Anna Patrick writes, "What can you tell us about plans for transit-oriented development at Federal Way? Do you know how this housing will be funded? Will they be using low-income housing tax program?" And then she writes, "Since we're being told that we must reduce our school impact fees or we won't get market-rate apartments, what could we expect to be happening? Are we trying to bring in housing for future college students?" All right. Well, thank you, Anna. Great questions. As for transit-oriented development, the city's center zoning is conducive to and would facilitate transit-oriented development. Now, that is a mix of uses, one of which could be housing within walking distance of a transit node. If, it could also be retail. I think transit-oriented development is really, some of it is, anticipates housing, but a lot of it is possible retail uses as well. So according to statute, these, they must first offer it. There's, there's state law in place that it's got to be offered to affordable housing projects, and then we're, we're looking at that, and we're looking at the zoning and about that. So with regard to your, your issue with regard to the equation with multifamily housing, the current, the current cost per unit used to be an impact fee of about $3,500 for multifamily housing. Now, it's about north of $20,000 per unit. That's a de facto ban, and the only thing that's going to come in as a result of that will be this non-market rate housing. You're going to get subsidized housing because at that rate, the only people that could afford to do that will be government. And that's why we've got to make sure that we have a mix of housing. We cannot have all of one. And so we, we have not been told that. That is, this is what we've surmised. It's just basic business principles. If you price everybody else out of the market, the only people that, the only development that you're going to see is this subsidized low-income housing, and we really need a mix, as I said. So, Sherri Ashcraft, "I'd like to know why it takes so long to dismantle homeless encampments, but yet there are no safe places for them? And why must a homeowner be responsible for the cleanup if it's on their property? The homeowner didn't invite them, must jump through red tape, and it takes months for the city to remove them, either on public and private land, and many just return within days." Well, first, Sherri, it doesn't take months. It takes a phone call. All we need to do, we've actually shut down more than 100 homeless encampments since we started the homeless, since I initiated the homeless services camp cleanup initiative. We've got a deputy chief of police which is in charge of it, and all we need to do is know where it's at, and we go take, take care of it. So you've got two types. Let me get a glass of water. We've got two types. We've got private property, and we've got public property. If it's on private property and people are on your property, they're trespassing. And we only need like a few days to get people notice, but then we actually will, will assist homeowners and landowners with the immediate removal of people from their property if, if there's trespassing. The second issue is on public property. Once again, we give a few days' notice. I think it's 72 hours' notice. We let people know that if they cannot be at a certain location for various reasons, whether it's sensitive land sites or, you know, a park or whatever it is, we'll let people know you cannot be here, and we give them, you know, 72 hours. Now, with regard to people cleaning up on their own property, I don't think it would be appropriate, I don't think it's probably legal for us to pay to clean up a homeless encampment on private property unless we were reimbursed. So if we're notified of it, or if we actually, what usually happens is, is that code compliance officers will see an encampment, notify the landowner, and with, with the landowner's consent, we will make sure these people are removed from the private property. But as a city, we can't pay to clean up their property. We certainly did not allow that condition to exist. So, so we're not talking about months. We're not talking about any red tape. We're talking about, we just need to know it, what's going on, and we'll take care of it. Okay. And as far as where they're, as far as where they're going to, where they're going to go, I just don't think it's the city's responsibility to set up a homeless camp or set aside land for a permanent homeless camp. I don't, I don't think that's what's going on. But I'll tell you, what is going on at the new, the former New Horizon Hotel on Pack Highway, right next to the, next to Shag Housing and the, and the post office, is you've got, with the, with use of King County funds and state funds, thanks to Pete Von Reichbauer and the former Speaker of the House, there are $6 million that Fusion is going to be able to utilize to make sure that we've got transitional and emergency housing for homeless individuals right there where the New Horizon Hotel was. So that's a big deal. Gail Bossart writes, "Is it on the city's radar to re-stripe or install new reflective buttons that are viewable at night when the streets are wet with rain? 320th Street heading westbound, or west beyond First Avenue is in need of a review and revamp. City workers need to make these observations at night, not only during day hours for the safety of the city streets." Gail, I want to let you know, um, last year, we, these are called RPMs, raised pavement, raised pavement markers. Thank you. They're called RPMs. We installed over 8,000 of those reflector markers and reflectors throughout the city this past year. We'll continue to do that. But that's a great question. When I saw your question, I was actually able to ask EJ, our Public Works Director, and we were able to get that answer. Okay. Stephanie McGatt says, "I know the schools are being rebuilt and such, but what is going to happen to stop the permitting issue to continue happening and delay school openings even more? I'm heartbroken that Lake Grove Elementary had to stay in the very, in the old DeVry Building until winter break next year instead of starting at the new building or waiting till the end of the year to move." I think with the transition of the new buildings, we'd best to have this at the beginning of the year, not four months into the school year. Thank you, Stephanie. Um, you know, we'll continue to work with the school district. We're doing everything we can, and that was one of the things, that there was a great level of cooperation between the school district and the city to get the DeVry Building open, albeit a few days late. Ann Gray writes, the Federal Way Chamber of, oh, thank you, Ann, for writing this question. "The Federal Way Chamber of Commerce has compiled data from their members that show huge frustration over the city's permit process." Well, Ann, the first part of that question first. The Chamber of Commerce reached out to their membership, and even though we put out over 3,000 permits per year, they only, their data is comprised of 30 responses. Three, zero, 30. We don't believe that's statistically significant. Out of those 30, a third of those people were dissatisfied. So what's a third of 30? 10. So I really take, that entire premise and what's being put out in the paper and actually by the Federal Way Chamber of Commerce is frankly outrageous and not true. You've got 30 people who put a, who replied to a Chamber of Commerce study, and only a third of those people are dissatisfied. 10 people. So I, you know, I sat down with the, with Becca Martin, the head of the chamber, and we actually had the school district there, not school, not the school district. We had the fire department there in Lake Haven, and we went over this with them, and I'm like, why are you going to put out this study with 30 responses? And I really, I relayed that that's not what a good partner does, and it's very, very unfortunate that this piece of information is out there because it's not accurate. And when 10 people maybe, we had a, out of 3,000, 1,000 permits that were issued, you essentially have 10 people that registered online, their displeasure. That, what is that, like a .1, .01%? It's, it's, I would call that statistically insignificant. Now, we want to help people. It's our job to help people as much as we can, but we're in the truth business and, and not in the supposition business. Was there another part of that? Because I, that was just the first part of that. Okay. Then the, so then the Federal Way School District has, has expressed their concerns. You know, Ann, I would really encourage you to read what we, hasn't posted yet? Okay. I would, and I would really encourage you to read the memo by our Public Works Director and our Community Development Manager, our Community Development Director, about everything that we did for the school district with regard to this. So we do have a great permitting process. We did everything we could possibly do, and we worked overtime. We actually did the work for them in certain situations, and we, we are not going to look the other way. We are not going to do their work for them, and we're not going to let things pass that should not pass. That's what happened. And, and we are, we are, these are professionals with their professional credentials on the line, and they are not going to issue permits unless the work is done. And these are about schools. This is about safety. This is about making sure that, that we, we're building schools for children, for students. Okay. What's, uh, oh, Kelly Houston writes, "Would it be cheaper, number one, follow other city leads with efforts to ban panhandling, and number two, increase police force than it is to cover the cost of clean, illegal camping cleanup a year?" Well, actually, Kelly, it's both. Okay? So number one, you cannot ban panhandling. That is not constitutional. In the United States of America, the First Amendment to the Constitution does not allow us to ban panhandling. There are a couple of cities that have this on the books, but it's not enforceable. So we are not going to ban panhandling because it's not legal, and we would be sued, and we would, we should be found liable if we did anything like that. People have a constitutional right to free speech. They don't have a right to block traffic, to hassle people, to get in your face, to hassle you, and there are already laws in place for that. But you cannot ban panhandling. Sorry, I'm getting a little wound up here, but, um, let's see here. Kelly wrote another, no, no. Go back up to Kelly, because she had another thing about adding police. No, up, up. No, no, down, down. Right there. And we are adding police. We know that we're up to 134 now, and we have, actually, we're going to apply for another cops grant to get more officers. Okay. So thank you, Kelly. Great question. And we are, the number of officers we have has nothing to do with the fact that we don't allow has nothing to do with the fact that we don't allow illegal homeless encampments, you know, wherever they pop up. That has nothing to do with our officers. And that's really kind of been apples and oranges issue. Doug Lenz writes, "I'd like to see more neighborhood patrols since the new apartments have gone up on 320th. There have been a lot of youth breaking into cars." Thank you, Doug. We'll make sure we get more officers out there. That vigilance is very important about people going through neighborhoods. Okay, so the new Fusion show, Stephanie wrote, "The new Fusion shelter at the hotels is for individuals or families, only like we're TOD, or Todd, or told." Well, I think, I think it's going to be a combination. I think it's, you know, housing homelessness is on a continuum. You've got emergency overnight, and you've got long-term transition. And it's about a continuum in there, about where you find people, you know, where people are at in that process. So Fusion, I'm going to take a tour of the new site here pretty quick, and we'll find out all those. You know, Scott had a question. Where was Scott's? Okay, Scott Chase asked about Proposition 1 from 1996, about whether we are in compliance with that, and some concerns about that. I want to tell you, Scott, you know, we've been round and round about this. Our legal counsel does tell us, we are in full compliance with Proposition 1. And when that was first passed, that was for 18 officers, we were at 136 level of staffing at that time. After that time, as a result of the Great Recession, we dropped all the way down to about 122, 123. We've been working our way back. As deputy mayor, I led the effort to get up to 124, then 126. Then, over the course of the past six years, we've added another eight officers to 134. And now I've been talking to the chief about applying for another COPS grants to eventually get us to 140. That is the goal, to get us to a 1, you know, 1 to 1.4 ratio. And so that's the plan. Oh, there's Scott right there. Jack Parks, "Are there still only two officers assigned to the homeless encampment task force?" No, Jack, there's a lot of, well, two officers. Well, I actually, when they clean up a homeless task force, I think there's, you know, Jack, I actually, off the top of my head, I know that we've got our special unit that assists with that. But we don't just have two officers that deal with that. We have a whole team of officers that helps with that process. All right, Lamont Stiles, "What are your plans to reduce violence, especially concerning youth, besides more police?" Lamont, that's a great question. We've got, you know, and I actually saw another question about what are we doing with the Violence Prevention Coalition recommendations? So those have gone through the process, and they are, really, they are contained in our legislative agenda to make sure that we've got, you know, programming for youth, that we've got engagement for youth. There was a study that was done by the state legislature last year at our request, to make sure that we've got community engagement. And it really is getting people like you that are really involved in the community, and making sure that we have conversations, and that we have activities for youth, and those efforts are ongoing. But yeah, I think you're absolutely right, that we really want to make sure that before kids, you know, before young students or young people start going down that path, that they have engagement. And that's why there's quite a number of initiatives in town that you're probably well aware of, that are at work. Okay, "I was at one town hall meeting, Debbie Smith Harvey, I was at one town hall meeting where you mentioned controlling traffic lights using a live monitoring system. Can you give an update on this?" That's in the works? That is a, what's the name of that again? The Adaptive Traffic Control System. And that's literally being constructed and being worked on as we speak. I think it was contained in this last budget. $500,000 for that. So it's in the works, it's about to go operational. And it was for the downtown core, and then it's going to be expanding. But we will really have somebody, you know, watching traffic flow, going through, you know, being able to adapt our traffic control in real time. So thank you, Debbie, great question. Kelly Houston, "Would also appreciate an update on the installation of sidewalks on 325th and Hoyt Road. Our students deserve that, especially when it gets dark early, and people race down that road with limited vision." Kelly, I couldn't agree more. I walked those streets not long ago, and it's scary. And I really, I've been talking to our folks about trying to identify, trying to identify funding to make sure that we get sidewalks in that area. So that's an area that I'm going to keep working on to get grant funding. In the ranking of projects, it's not very high. But I think because of danger to students, and because of the elementary school right there, we need to, with Green Gables, we need to make sure that we do exactly that. Okay. Rick Luna, here's one. "I voted for you because you seem not to act like a politician. You continue to say crime is down, but we and you know it's not. What's the plan? No politician answer, be straight and tell us." Thank you, sir. Rick, first of all, thank you for your support, thank you for the question. Rick, the numbers are down. And we are going to continue to, it's the number-one thing we work on. But even though the numbers are down, we want to get them down even further. Now, when we have the robberies like we did on First Avenue, or when we have, you know, these residential burglaries, or commercial burglaries, we need to make sure that we quickly identify these people and take them off the street. When I was at the King County Prosecutor's Office, car theft back in about 2005, car theft, we were, as a King County, we had more than $15,000 car thefts, excuse me, 15,000 car thefts per year. Once we started the Car Theft Initiative, CTI, we were able to take off those high-profile, those prolific offenders, and remove them from the population. And we were able to actually, with sentencing enhancements, we were able to put these people in custody, and the numbers plummeted. And we were able to get that, and we were able to, really, frankly, within just a few years, chop that number in half. The numbers are what they are. Have you posted the crime numbers, the PowerPoint? I would encourage everybody to take a look at the PowerPoint that the Chief of Police put out. Now, I'm not a Pollyanna, and I don't believe, I mean, I'm very positive, I try to be a very positive person. And Rick, I want to tell you, you know, I don't have my head in the sand on this. The raw numbers are instructive, but they're a starting point, they're not an ending point. We want to keep after this. We want the numbers to keep going down, and down, and down. And we want to identify who are doing these crimes, and get them held accountable, and put them in custody, and turn them around. I mean, that's really what this is about. You can't incarcerate people forever, nor should you. And, but we want to make sure that we hold people accountable. And that's why at the City of Federal Way, that's what we do. So I want to let you know that, you know, we need our neighbors to be talking to each other, we need our neighbors to know each other, communicate. We need to hear from you. We actually removed graffiti within 24 hours of it being posted. But Rick, I think central to your question is, and I was, I've thought a lot about this. There was something in the paper this morning, and I was talking to my wife about this. Why do people not want to believe these numbers? And I think that there's a number of reasons. You know, people know what they hear, they know what they experience. And, you know, it is, it's perplexing to me that people don't want to believe the numbers. The numbers are going to be what they are, and these numbers don't change because people aren't reporting, because people report these key crime indicators. The regular theft in the third degree, the misdemeanor theft, that has stayed somewhat static, or maybe dropped maybe just 2%. And that's the misdemeanor theft that we're seeing at the retailers. That's why I reached out to some of the local retailers and talked with them about their policies. I went to Lowe's and met with their staff, and I was talking to them, and talked to their security people, went in the back room, and I had a whole room of their security people. They've actually got a national policy that they don't want to go hands-on with trespassers, for liability purposes, and making sure that their people don't get hurt or injured. And that's why we, you know, we've really developed strategies with Home Depot, with Lowe's, and Fred Meyer, and our pharmacies, to make sure that we've got strategies to make sure we respond quickly, that we get license plates, that we get cameras, and that we hold offenders accountable. But I want to tell you that I, you know, when we do have a spike of, I got to tell you, what really impressed me was we had that spike of robberies along First Avenue. The police department used cutting-edge technology, and I'm not going to get into what it was, but they used cutting-edge technology. And within a matter of days of the use of this technology, we were able to locate the exact apartment that these offenders were coming and going from. In fact, they were back in their apartment before these robberies could actually even get reported. But I can't say anymore about the technology. It was, let's just say it was very effective. And now we're looking for the person, a warrant is out for their arrest, instead of these retailers getting hit over and over. But it is the number-one priority of my administration, and of city government, and frankly, of any government, to ensure that we are safe. But I can tell you right now, we're having success, and we want to continue to have success. I see a former high school roommate, hi Renee, thanks for writing in. Car tabs. Sinead Balon, "What's your position on the $30 car tabs?" And, oh, here, I can't see that. "And how will that affect Light Rail Station in Federal Way?" Okay, the second part of that is, 976, which passed overwhelmingly by the voters, is not going to affect, we're told, will not affect the Sound Transit Light Rail Station. The $30 car tabs, that's the will of the people. And that is what the people of this community in this region have said they want. And if, that's what they want, period. And so I think that it's incumbent upon us, the people, it's incumbent upon people that are elected to listen and follow the instructions of the people that put us here, and that we work for. So the people have spoken, and they want $30 car tabs. And I believe the will of the people should be respected. And it will be, it should be. Okay, actually, Leah, I know that we had, with regard to the Violence Prevention Coalition recommendations, I'm going to put that up later. I know that we, remember what we did, I don't know if you saw that council meeting? We had a council meeting in which we ranked some of the, what we referred to as low-hanging fruit of the easily achievable, or readily achievable Violence Prevention Coalition. And that was the other thing, you guys. Remember the shootings that we had three years ago? Now, excuse me, four years ago, in 2016, where we had the string of homicides in early 2016? We actually, in response, and that was just a really difficult time for this community. I formed the Violence Prevention Coalition. They came out with recommendations. And those recommendations have been divided into easily achievable, or readily achievable, and then the others were more long-term. And so what we'll do, Leah, in answer to your question, is later today, or tomorrow, we'll post underneath your comments, or in response to your comments, which one of, which of those recommendations? I don't have them off the top of my head, but I'll get them for you, and I'll post them here. Okay? Update on the Hub University Initiative? So we've been working with our partners, the school district, and, oh, I think we're going to go till 1:10? 1:10 PM, I think we're going to go to, just so everybody knows. Okay, so we have been working with the Federal Way School District, Highline College, and University of Washington Federal Way with regard to the, what's referred to as the Hub University Initiative. We're still looking for a location. In the sites that we've been looking for, they just weren't a fit. Highline has been taking the lead on the leasing. And we've got a couple of leads on certain properties. But right now, the effort is to make sure that we can get a closure on a lease. And that's what we've been working on. We've been working quite hard. There have been monthly meetings with the Hub people, and coordination with Highline, the school district, and the University of Washington Tacoma. And so they're great partners, we're excited about it. And we will give you a report as soon as we get some traction on that. Okay, Kelly Houston. This question is so low priority, but there's anything on the works to get rid of the use of plastic bags in the city? Not right now, Kelly. It's a good question, it's a good thought. I've thought about it. It's something that I think, I think it was raised in the state senate yesterday. Okay, Jim, I know that you've got, Jim O'Connor, I know you've got some concerns about the school district. We, they're our partners, we'll continue to work with the school district. And, you know, we're all connected, and we want to make sure that our school district is successful. Can you go up? So, there were some other questions I want to make sure we don't miss. Okay. Oh, okay, we talked about Anna Patrick, Dana Holloway, Anna Patrick. Talking about Bill Wyatt. Actually, any other questions? Joe Webb asks, "What are we doing about the murder rate?" Joe, I want to let you know, actually, I really enjoy Joe's comments, and he's a real funny, colorful guy, and, but this is not a colorful subject. You know, I could tell you that, you know, whenever a homicide occurs, whenever something serious in this community occurs, I'm notified about it immediately. And it is really the number-one priority of our community. And I, you know, we're going to do everything we can, and I said this to Lamont as well, where, you know, you've got certain situations, you know, stabbing at the, at a motel, difficult to predict or do anything about. You know, the situation with the 85-year-old woman is tragic. I think there was a question by Debbie Harvey Smith about that, about what can we do to help with seniors who are being priced at their homes? Remember, if you will, that the 85-year-old woman accused now of murdering one of the people that was living in her house, that she'd been in since 1979. She was in the process of essentially being evicted. Truly tragic. I met her a couple of years ago, three years ago now. And as I was going through that neighborhood. And it's truly tragic. And we need to make sure, I think, Debbie, in answer to your question, we need to make sure that when seniors have a situation like that, when it doesn't look like they've got anywhere to go, if they're just absolutely desperate, that we've got mechanisms in place, as a safety net in this community, to make sure that somebody at that stage in their life, or at any stage in their life, doesn't become homeless. We need to make sure that we're a better community than that. So thank you for that question. Emily Spanier writes, "I would appreciate like to thank the Federal Way Police Department for a non-emergence call the other night during the snow. There was a suspicious vehicle outside my home late at night, and two police officers came within 15 minutes. They did everything correctly and handled the situation swiftly." Emily, thank you. I, you know, officers, you know, when I was a prosecutor, we used to always be told that officers don't have routine calls. There's no such thing as a routine call. There's no such thing as a routine police stop. Any incident can turn deadly quickly. And, you know, and they do so much for us in our community. And I think this community really stands with this police department and all the work that they do. Let's see here. Doug Lenz, "What are the Federal Way Police Department plans on the unsolved murders in Federal Way? There's an unsolved homicide from 2016 and '17 on New Year's weekend." So Doug, I can tell you, we continue to work on those cases. And they are, I really, you know, since they're not solved, I can't really talk about them. But I can tell you that we continue to work on those, and they're a high priority. Okay. Paul writes, "Couple recent shooting of folks in their cars, was this gang related?" You know, Paul, perhaps, likely. But I can't speak authoritatively to that, and I probably shouldn't, until I know all the circumstances. I know they're working on that. I know they're working on these calls. Two 19-year-old young men lost their lives. It's tragic. And whether even if, you know, oftentimes, you know, people fall in with the wrong crowd, or they're at the wrong place at the wrong time. But we're going to get to the bottom of it, and hold those accountable. Okay, anything else? You know, there's been a lot of talk about the Performing Arts and Events Center, and the kitchen, and the million dollars, or the close to the million dollars we received. I have to tell you that I find that entire discussion perplexing in that we ask our state legislators for a million dollars so we could actually help build the kitchen, so that would help pay for the kitchen costs so we can do the Native American Culinary Institute. It's going to be one of the first of, it's going to be the first of its kind in the nation. It's going to be one of those things where we really need to start off slow and make sure that we do it right. But I want to let you know that, you know, we have been, when we read these things in the paper, it's concerning, because, you know, I want to make sure it's abundantly clear, the paper, it's concerning because, you know, I want to make sure it's abundantly clear, we never asked for that money to be repurposed. We asked for that money repeatedly for purposes of rebuilding, of building that kitchen for the Culinary Institute, and that's exactly what it was used for. And so, frankly, I find this whole episode and this entire discussion, I mean, other than the delay of, and the time that it's taken to start the Culinary Institute, I find actually the entire discussion, you know, disappointing, frankly. So, I could tell you that when we first started off, we had a director of the Performing Arts and Events Center, we transitioned to professional management, and now we've got, you know, the great organization that is running our Performing Arts and Events Center, and they're doing great things. And, you know, we are, we're going to be getting a Native American Culinary Institute as soon as we can kind of get that up and started. But the money that we received from the state was used specifically for that kitchen. I also want to say, in regard to the PAC and all of this, you know, we built a $32.7 million facility, and it is 85% paid off, 85%. I'm not aware of any other municipal or government building of this nature that can, that can boast that. And so, I'm really proud of that. I do want to talk to people about the State of the City address. It'll be on, it'll be on Thursday, February 27, 6:00 PM, at the Performing Arts and Events Center. We have space for community organizations in the lobby before the event, and we've got a bunch of really exciting initiatives. And if you've got questions that were not asked or didn't get answered, please send an email about it, shoot me a message on Facebook, or send me an email. My email is jim.ferrell@cityoffederalway.com. That's jim.ferrell@cityoffederalway.com. Yeah, we've got some really exciting things. I want to talk to you about what's going on with the group I put together to honor former, our former representative and former city council member Roger Freeman, Representative Roger Freeman, and talk about ways that we can honor him. We've got a 30-for-30 program that we're doing to honor our 30-year, excuse me, to 30 minutes of donated time in honor of the 30 years of city government. Let's see here. Oh, Paul asks, is 2020 still a year of austerity like 2019? Paul, great question. 2019 was a year of austerity. Now, we've got the $2.1 million from SCORE that has freed up, and it's really going to allow us to adjust things in the city, either add staff, adjust salaries, where we have a salary study. So, 2020 should not be the year of austerity, but even less so once we get that million dollars a year from the water and excise tax. And we are looking for additional revenue stream, you know, and people were talking about that. But, you know, when we talk about revenue, that, that is something that we've got to be very careful about, very thoughtful about. As a result of the results of 976, the voters clearly said that they did not want to see additional fees on their licensing tabs. And we had contemplated, and frankly, passed, I believe it was three years ago, three and a half years ago, a transportation benefit district, a TBD, that would be, I think, I think it was like 10 or 15, $15 on car tabs, but in light of the passage of 976, I don't think that's going to be available to us. So, and I think based on the will of the people, I think we should be very careful about that. While we need to really work on revenue for our city operations, we want to be careful that, you know, that the people of this community are not overtaxed, and we need to be very, it's a very, it's a, it's a fine line. We have core services that we need to deliver, and we are going to deliver them, but we want to make sure that we do so in a fair manner and a thoughtful manner. So, we'll, we'll be taking a look and discussing at, at those types of things, probably at the council retreat on February 1st, Saturday, February 1st, down in Dumas Bay. Okay, let's see here. If you have questions that didn't get answered, please, again, shoot me an email. I'd like to thank everyone who watched and participated in this event. Be looking for a Neighborhood Connection meeting in March. We'll put you, we'll put this on YouTube as well, and you can watch the video. I want to say thank you. Thank you so much for your great questions. You know, and it's this kind of interaction, I think, is at the very core of what we do at government, and that's, we work for you. I say that a lot, and I mean that. And the most important thing that we do every day is hear from you, the people that we work for. And so, it's great to hear from you, and keep it up, keep up your tough questions. Those are important, and, and we'll do the best we can to answer them, and we'll, we'll show up here day after day, working for you. Any last questions we could think of? Oh, yeah, thank you very much, Tyler. We've got an MLK event this Saturday, excuse me, this Monday, Monday, at the Performing Arts and Events Center at 11:00 AM. I hope you can make it. Actually, we've got Milo Kavik, who is a medal winner at several Olympics, and swimmer, and a really great person, and I'll say a few words. I think Director Campbell will be there, and saying a few words. And Thomas Jefferson High School will take the lead this year with the Martin Luther King event. So, that is something that is, it's going to be a great event. This Saturday, actually, we have the 13th Korean-American, the Korean Celebration at the Performing Arts and Events Center. The door opens at 3:00 PM, and I think the performances start at 5:00 PM. So, I'll be there, should be a lot of fun, and it's free to the public. Anything else for the good order? Okay, you guys, thank you so much, and it's an honor to be your mayor, and thank you so much for all your great questions. Take care.